Okay.
Okay. It is 7:02. And we would like to call this meeting to order. You stand for the indication, please.
Oh, we've come to you as a group to try to make decisions for the betterment of this community. We ask people to lead our thoughts, our footsteps and our prayers along the way to do the best we can for this community and the people public at large. We thank you, we pray to you, we appreciate you for your grace and for forgiving us where we've bashed work. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. We just to fly. The United States of America. The Republic, what we just danced. One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
We'll have roles that sit down.
So, Allison. Pam Reed.
Elizabeth, how's it going?
Kathy O'Neil.
Oh, Larry Bird.
Okay, we're excusing Harry Rosario. He's on vacation all of this month. And just to let everyone know, James has a meeting he has to go to a little bit later, so he could be leaving our meeting just a little bit away. Okay, so, let's just get right into it. Everybody will... The announcements we have. First of all, a movie in the park is this week. And we have a tentative rain down by 22nd. But I don't think we're gonna need it because according to the weather, it's not gonna rain.
It'll be hot.
And our next meet and greet will be in August for all the businesses. Does anyone else have any other announcements?
What time do you want us there to get things going or what, you know?
We will discuss that a little bit later in the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so Charlie at Lakeside Church, I don't know if anybody knows. But he filled out papers, he's now got a 501(c). And he has a truck coming in monthly with food. He was able to get that for this area. So, he does post it on Facebook. And he's giving out food every so often.
Oh, very nice. Very nice. Glad to hear that, okay. We don't have any... Any other announcements? We don't have any citizens, so I guess we have no citizen input. We wanna move quickly through the consent agenda. Actually, what I'd like to do since James needs to leave early, I would like to move the consent agenda down to the end of our meeting, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes.
Can I have a motion for that?
I make a motion that we move the consent agenda to below the old business.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so we'll go ahead and do the old business. Right? Movies in the Park, Larry wanted to. Okay. So, I think Allison said probably our best bet is to meet there about 6:00 PM.
About 6:00.
Mm-hmm. And then we'll get everything started and ready to go about 8:00. Okay?
I'm working in church that night.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Their movie night, first one is this Saturday night.
Is it?
Right.
I did bring the popcorn popper and a case of popcorn to the fire department. They have that.
Are there bags in there?
Yes. Yeah, they're little bags, but there's bags in there and there's like over a case of popcorn.
Okay.
With all the seasoning and everything on it, you gotta just turn it on, heat it up, dump it in there and watch it.
Don't put start popping.
Awesome. Awesome.
Yeah, there's an extra light bulb too. That can keep it hot. Because that light bulb's gone out or goes out. But it was new when I used it last Christmas.
I need a scoop.
There should be a scoop there too, but look, there should be at least one scoop, but I had two. So, I told the guy to pop some popcorn, make it, you know, learn how to use it. Eat some popcorn, make sure you know what you're doing.
Yeah.
He saw how he listened to me, right? Yeah.
Kathy will make sure it's working.
There you go.
Okay, and so, we're meeting at 6:00. Fire department is going to do drinks and popcorn, stuff like that, for sale. And then, we're gonna switch the movie from Impossible. After reviewing the movie, there was a lot of... It was about a typhoon and there was a lot of incidents there where it was...
A bit gory.
A little bit gory. So, people were dying.
Yeah.
And so, we thought, that may not be the best one to start with.
It had a good...
Yeah.
It had a good story all through.
It is a good story, I just thought for the age groups that would probably, most of them that are gonna be showing, it was probably a little bit more 13...
Well, you know, you were in front of the water.
I know. I'm not gonna scare him because that's the first thing.
That would be just so much movie.
Yes, I believe that All Creatures, Small and Big, is a really good all-age movie. I enjoyed it and it is, you know, it's about the animals getting onto Noah's Ark, but there's a few that aren't quite what they're supposed to be, so, you know, they have to try to find a way to trick themselves getting on there. And it was really cute. And it's animated, but it is, you know, more of a all-age group type, yeah.
So, we're gonna switch movies on it, if that's okay with everybody. So, I actually need a motion to switch movies.
I make a motion to change from the Impossible to the All Creatures, Small and Big.
I'll second.
All in favor?
None.
Okay. All right, is there anything else we need to discuss about?
Um, we... What time do we want them there? We said about 8:30?
We said 8:30, okay, and our flyer says 8:30. So, we're gonna plan on then, we're gonna try to get everything set up.
Right.
And then, plan on them being there at 8:30.
Okay.
I'm going to ask how it works to mow because I was just over there checking on it and the grass has gotten high again.
Oh, we do want them to bring blankets or lawn chairs for... to sit in?
Yes, everybody needs to bring their own blanket and lawn chair and all that kinda stuff. Because we will be doing it, you know where the stage was for the 4th of July? You know how the hill goes down?
Yeah.
Down towards the screen, that's the perfect viewing spot.
Nice.
And so, we're gonna be doing it out on that corner.
So, where do you want us to set up?
Do you know that pavilion that's right there next to where the stage was? That seems like that would be the perfect...
On the far side or this side? Where we... Well, you don't know where we were for...
You know where the... You know the big one.
Where the beer garden was?
Where the beer garden was, would be the best one, you know.
And then, we're gonna have to use Chris's speakers.
Right. Um, Bill did go back into the hospital just a few minutes ago, so...
Yeah.
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 He's looking at surgery probably instead.
Cheek and arm, so Kathy uses this.
Great, perfect, perfect.
Red's supposed to be there and he knows how to use it.
Okay. If we continue doing these, we may want to look into hiring equipment.
Right.
Okay. But we need to do this one and I also want to know if, you know, in August, I'd like to see us continue. And I was talking to some people that have been going over to Emery and they said that they did it more than just the summer, so...
Right, they do it throughout the year.
Throughout the year. So, I would love to do that. I think that would be a really good idea to go ahead and plan on, like a once-a-mine thing to go over to Emery and do this.
Do you know, tell it to him about 20? How about?
Nice.
Did my keep put them in the shade before the sun goes down?
Okay.
If we don't use it this time, maybe we'll use it next time, but yeah, I have a tin of wood.
A canopy type thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Why they sitting white or why you sitting white? Whatever.
This is the seating area?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Whatever, you know, it's a thought.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
It's a good thought.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and kinda look at the calendar and pick a date for August so I can go to the council. August date.
For the movie, for the greeting meet?
Well, we need the movie first. Get a date in August for movies in the park.
Somewhere around the 15th, it'll be a month away, not the park.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, it looks like the 12th, 19th or 26th.
Well, the 12th, we're gonna have to talk about marking on the lake, that's supposed to be marked on the lake. But that's Canton Week Camp.
The 5th would be Canton Week Camp.
After the first Monday.
Yeah, the first Saturday is the 5th in August.
But the first Monday is the 6th.
Oh.
August the 7th. August the 7th. August 7th is the first Monday. Which we put August the 5th as the Canton Saturday.
That's the Saturday before the first Monday, the 5th.
I thought they did it like that.
Like that. They do the one closest, closest to the Saturday.
Right.
I thought it was after the first Monday. Because they had those last weekend. When we had the...
I'm gonna ask Chad's mom, because she goes out there and she has a...
Yeah, it's always been the...
You have the internet on your phone?
Saturday before the first Monday.
Let's see if I can try.
My phone's in the car.
I mean, it doesn't work in here.
Right. If they've switched theirs, we're gonna have to switch ours.
Yeah, that's my... Just make it the next Saturday.
Okay, as far as...
That's the 12th.
And as far as the... Yeah, we could do the 19th for movies in the park.
No. Then there's no problem at all, right?
Right.
Okay, so, you want a motion?
Yes, please, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we have our next movie night in park on August 19th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I'm on it.
Okay.
Now, I have a question, this has come out of order, but somebody made a comment on Facebook. That when we vote on something, that we all always say aye.
Instead of going around, right? We can go around the room if you want.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it's just...
That's just kind of up to the meeting people that are doing it. It's that I've watched several from all kinds of towns and some of them say aye, some of them... It just depends on really if they can have a good view and know who's saying the ayes or if there's a nay, then they say a nay.
We don't have a problem doing it one at a time, so we might...
We might square four man, okay.
So, we will start with you.
Allison. Just say your name if you say it's okay.
Say aye or nay.
Yeah.
James.
Yes.
Four.
Pam, four.
Elizabeth, four.
Kathy, four.
Larry, five.
Sounds like four.
You're fourth.
Four or against it.
Okay, all right. And we'll start during that, I guess, if people wanna be picky.
Well, if she just says it's all in favor, then they just go and say just the name, then that gets that in favor.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, to the meet and greet.
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't we have a day...
So, we had talked about the 24th for that.
Yeah.
Is that still a good date for you?
At 5:00, right?
That's a Thursday.
At 5:00.
At 5:00, yes. Is that still a good date for everyone?
Yes.
And since we are not changing the date, I don't guess we need to make a motion on it. And any discussion about the meet and greet?
We're just gonna do it like we did before, right? Same thing, same setup.
Same setup, yeah.
Have we made a flyer?
Not yet.
I have one made, I was just waiting for the confirmation on the date.
Okay. So, if you get that, Jamie, I'll go ahead and start getting those out.
Okay.
We can share it on any Facebook page and we all can get it, we can all share it on all of our Facebooks.
That's gonna come in in just a little bit.
We're gonna get that going here real quick. Okay, so, um... Is there's anything we need to do with that except with the flyer? Anything else we need to discuss on that?
4.
Or we're still gonna just do it like we did, or we're gonna try to...
I'll do another chicken salad thing.
So, you're not catering it? Didn't we talk about that last week, okay?
We can cater it next year. Okay, if that's okay with everybody.
Actually, we got...
We're bringing brownies.
You want the brownie? The brownies, whatever else.
Brownies were great.
I didn't get one green too for me.
Okay.
Yeah, the brownies were great.
Yeah, so was the chicken salad and all those stuff, everything.
Everything was, everything was good, yeah?
See what? I pigged out. I pigged out. I pigged out.
I could go to Subway like we did for the other and just have them cut them smaller and just do a tray of those also if y'all would like us to do that.
I don't know, we had plenty of food.
We did.
I think next time. Okay, we'll talk about that. That's okay.
Okay, we'll talk about it next time. All right, Toby's on her way. Yay. Okay, um, so let's go on to the repairs. Okay, so this is what's happened so far. We have a new roof on the building over there. It's been cleaned out. It has been pressure washed inside and out. There have been repairs made to the outside of the building where some holes were. Um, we replaced one window that was cracked. We put in a new window where an old window had once been that they had blocked up. And he has removed the blocks and put a bigger window. We put one new door on and we're fixing to put another new door on.
Pull up?
No.
Or the regular walk-in doors? You got a different key and stuff?
Okay. And, um, he should start painting pretty soon. He has not been able to get out there and because he's been doing all these other...
Painting.
Well, he hasn't painted yet because he's been doing all these other repairs on. And, yeah, he comes in usually in the evening, it's cooler, you know, to try to do it. He will be getting the paint done and he's doing a glorious job.
Who's doing the paint?
It's Paint King is doing that. So, that's where we're at on there. We do have electricity to the building now. And we don't have it turned on as far as the electrical inside the building. We have to get a permit for that. And we have to get an electrician to come out to wire it. So, that may be one of the things that we consider doing this next month is if I get some agreement, a motion here, that we'll go ahead and try to get electricity inside the building.
So, you need a motion that we work on it?
Yeah, that we work on the water and electricity next on the building.
I make a motion that we begin the process to get our water and electricity correct and maintained and up and running in the building.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Allison.
James.
Pam.
Elizabeth.
Kathy.
Larry.
All right, we're making progress with that. All right, now, we're gonna talk about a possible Facebook page for the EDC. And I'm gonna turn the clock over to Allison.
Okay, so, for the, well, can I ask that we kinda do these in the opposite order that we have them in?
Absolutely, we can.
I'm gonna move F, D, E and F, and I'm just gonna reverse them.
Okay.
And actually, I'm gonna put E on the top because the logo would come first. I did, I didn't get to make a copy of it, my printer is actually not functioning today. There's something going on with my internet at home, I don't know. I've never had issues since I got Frontier, but it is today. So, I wasn't able to print it out. If they do go on to www.westwalkneyedc.com, they can, the very first image that will come up is what I was asking to be the new logo for the West Walkney Economic Development Corporation. It does have the actual pictures inside, the letters are of the actual lake. Those were pictures taken, I took out my jet ski and got the pictures of the lake so that we wouldn't have to have generic pictures on there. And then, of course, the catfish keeping with the rest of the town's motif there. And, of course, just the West Walkney EDC. In creating that, that was also the landing page for the website that I'm asking to be approved for tonight. Along with the Facebook page, the Facebook page would just be a replica of the...
Website?
The website, pretty much. It'll have basically the same information they can get to or just link to the website for the information. But that way, we can start putting the EDC events and everything on Facebook as well and not just the website.
Can I put a disclosure on that Facebook page to where if there's any negative connotations that they will be removing or what?
I did wanna go over and make sure that, because there are regulations with the state laws on what we can and cannot put on there. I know that we cannot necessarily block individuals because it is an open forum and it is, you know, we can't really just...
We can just ask them to be polite and courteous to anything that they comment there. If they have something they wanna say to the EDC, please come to the meeting, we're welcome at all times.
Yes, yeah. But I just wanted to make sure that I get in the regulations right so that I'm not putting anything on there that shouldn't be on there.
Correct.
And I guess that's what I got for that. I don't know if y'all have all been able to see the website or not.
Did anyone get on and see the website?
I did. It looks awesome.
Looks great.
She did.
Thank you.
Is there a wish or anything else?
It is on, it's online, yes.
Awesome.
It is awesome. So, I was trying to get it up in here and you know how our internet is in here. And I couldn't get it up on my phone, but it says EDC and it has the catfish on it for the logo and and it's really...
The making grade.
It looks really nice. It is very, very similar to what the Chamber of Commerce has as their logo with the EDC. Yeah, we'll pass that.
That's really, that's really good.
You like that?
Yeah, I like it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I love that.
Professional.
Thank you.
That is wonderful. Insane, Larry.
Good.
Doesn't it love that?
Beautiful.
Yes. Yes.
Quite beautiful.
It is, that's...
Hard to see in the same...
They wash it their food.
Yes.
And this is the gentleman's...
I like that. It looks good.
They can see it or not, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's not really gonna... There it goes.
But maybe.
There we go.
Okay, so that's the logo that we'd like. And I guess the first thing we need to do is get a... If everybody's in agreement liking that logo, we need to get a motion to accept it as our logo for our EDC.
I love it. I make a motion, the week's such a beautiful, I love God that she's created.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Allison.
Pam.
Elizabeth.
Kathy.
Larry.
Okay.
All right, and...
So, the second would be, I guess, the Facebook page.
The Facebook page is the second one we're gonna discuss then. So, that being said, we're gonna, we're talking about doing a Facebook page. There are any pros and cons to both. We're trying to be very transparent with our people in what we're doing on the EDC. And that's the reason for the new webpage, that's the reason for considering doing a Facebook page. Here's my concerns. I do not want this to become a gripe session about things we cannot do anything about. The EDC is a separate entity from the city. We cannot do anything about roads. We cannot do, because our bylaws and the state of Texas prevents us from doing anything about roads. We cannot do anything about the Public Works Department. We're not associated with the Public Works Department. We cannot do anything about priming the city, other than supporting our police in the best way we can. So, this page, I want it very clear, is not the gripe page for all those things. It is a wonderful way for businesses to talk amongst themselves about things that are going on. And people in our community to tell us what they'd like to see in our community.
Put a brief statement there, what we're...
Right, and it will have all that information on it as well.
That should, if people read it, it should cover any extra flack.
Well, and to the point of, we can't stop them from saying anything, whether it's on our page or anybody else's page.
We can't respond.
Right.
We will not respond to any negative thing that comes across.
It'll be just more of us...
Just know that.
Posting events.
Not such. All right, the Facebook page will be for posting events. It will be for alerting our citizens of anything that's going on with the business that they need to know about. It will be for promoting our businesses and that type thing.
EDC works online.
EDC works online.
Right, and we won't be able to respond. But the only posting that we will do without even commenting on anybody else's is just the events and stuff for the EDC. That's things that are going on within the EDC and the community.
Right, I just wanna make that clear as we're talking about. Okay, so, um... One of the things that we'll have to watch is that that means that everyone on this board will need to be a member of that and will have to be watching what's coming across.
Well, and again, we can't delete anything that does get on there by state laws, so it's not really gonna be a matter of us having to watch what's even being put on there. It's just that we might need to pay attention to if they're requesting things to be done or, you know, but again, we just have to scroll past the inappropriate things.
Do you need to relate in bad language?
No, you cannot.
So, that, that is a negative about having a Facebook page. Is that you cannot delete any bad language.
None, because it's freedom of speech. And let me just tell you though, obscenity is not in the freedom of speech. Obscenities are not included in freedom of speech, you can go to jail for those things.
So, they can really get a citation for posting publicly that...
If it's offensive enough in the community, they can be...
Yeah.
And another negative I would say is there's somebody out here that posts a lot that doesn't even live here.
And that's fine, because we're not just for our community, we wanna bring people in. And I know who you're talking about and I understand. But again, the page is to get it out to our citizens, there are gonna be those random few that come through and have a lot to say and that's fine. Because sometimes we need to know what we're doing wrong in order to get things right. And he doesn't always have everything wrong, I will just say that. I know what you're talking about, but yeah, actually, some of his information is not too far off, so...
We just do the best we can.
Right, we just post what we're supposed to be posting, allow them to say what they're gonna say.
Who they are.
Yeah.
So, I would like though, everyone, to join that Facebook page so that we are aware of the things that are going on on that Facebook page.
Yes.
We might want to shut it down sometime.
And very easily, we can shut it down if it becomes something different than what we intended for it to. Okay, so, we need a motion on the floor.
I make a motion to to publish the Facebook page?
Right.
What do you see?
A second. All in favor?
Allison.
We're gonna start 30.
Kathy.
Elizabeth.
Pam.
James.
Allison.
Okay. All right.
And then it would just be the website.
Then the website.
Yes.
Okay, so the website will be doing what? Okay, so the website will be doing what the website should have done all along. It explains what the EDC is.
Yes.
It it's just wonderful. I cannot just tell you how wonderful it is. I wonder if we could stop the tape long enough to just walk outside and put it up on so that they can see it. Can we do that?
I can try to get it out there. I'm going to see if I can pull it up.
Yeah. We can just
Get the menu page at least up.
Yeah, the menu page at least. We can just do that.
Really easy to do.
It is very user-friendly. That's the best thing about it.
Do it for a good day.
And
It's easy to make one.
It, it, it is just, it's beautiful. It tells our purpose. It tells what statutes we live under as far as the laws go for the EDC. It introduces every board member. It you can put our menus, you know, for our agendas and our minutes on it, which we will do.
Has the link to YouTube.
The link to YouTube to, to see our meetings.
I mean, I might just start dressing better.
It has
I'm going to come with my hair put on.
It, it's just, it's a really good website.
Nice.
Really good. I cannot, I cannot tell you how happy I am with it. It's so beautiful. Allison's done a wonderful job.
I'm not sure if they'll be able to see it.
You go on.
I can give you a rundown of what, what's on there anyways. Okay, so the homepage, of course, would have the landing image of the logo and then a scroller down that tells that we're just, you know, being transparent and that's what the website is for. It says that we're committed to open and transparent transparency. And then it gives the information about it. And then it'll have our Business of the Month spot where we can do like we have been discussing for the Business of the Month. When they click on that, it takes them to a page that'll be where they can tell their story. So it'll have, you know, background of the business. The actual menu goes down. It'll have us, the board. It'll have the picture of each of us. And then when they, when I get all y'all's stories, we get to have those on there too. So it'll go, when they click the image, it'll go to an individual page for each of us to tell our stories, our background within the communities. And then it'll go over the agenda and minutes. And on that page, it also, you can get to the calendar. But the calendar will show the big calendar. And everybody will have to log in for that too. So if we have to add anything, any kind of events or anything, it'll automatically update on the website from a Google Calendar. And they can click on it or just hover over it and it'll give them the details of the event. And then below that, it'll actually list all of the events and the wordings without calendar knowledge. Okay, and then after that, it'll list the projects. It'll have a space for our projects that we've been doing. And then the knowledge base. It'll have, of course, the Development Corporation Act, the Articles of Incorporation, when we get those on there. The Open Meeting Handbook, the Public Information Handbook. And as I learn more and get more information, it'll be added on there as well. And then there's a business menu where it'll have the directory of the businesses. And then also, they just wanted to go directly to the Business of the Month page, so they can do that. And then I still need to get the available properties so that we can list those there.
You're going to put the available properties that are out there for sale
Yes.
On there?
Yes.
That are for businesses.
Correct. Commercial properties.
Okay.
And then, of course, it'll have the FAPs. And pretty much that's about what it is so far. As they scroll through, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it is actually, it takes up the whole thing. So it's quite a few pages. And of course, they can get to any of it through the menu at the top or they can just scroll through. And each page has a link from the homepage, so they can get there with ease.
Do we have a map that shows the zoning and the ability for properties?
I don't have that map. I do have the West Wocany map on there as is required by the state if you have anything to do with the city entity. Or like the city website should have the map of the city on it. So of course, the EDC would have to have the city map on there. But I don't have the zoning right there. I need to get one of those.
So they see a piece of land that was for sale, you know, what can be put there.
Right. I don't have that. I do need to get that on there.
That'd be great.
Yes. And, and that would go under the, the business menu where it'll have real estate or business real estate.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's about what I got for that.
Awesome. Okay, so everybody copy down the address for the website.
I'm sorry, and I just wanted to include that it does have the contact us, where they can send us an email through the, the Google websites.
Google it's there.
It'll go to all of us. It can, it'll go, we'll be able to list each one of us as a member on that page.
Okay. Okay, so www.westwocanyecd.com.
It's somewhere, whatever.
It's on your page. It's on your page up there.
Oh.
Right there. So be sure and get on that site sometime soon so that you can look at it and wade through it.
Will the Facebook page be on?
It is on. It's last now.
The only way for me to be able to get everything like I need it on there was to go ahead and just do that, so.
Nice. So now we just need to confirm it by motion on the floor for us to continue with it.
I'll make a motion and set the Facebook page.
We did the Facebook.
Yeah, we're doing this.
It's the website. Coming the website. Okay, I'll make a motion for the website to be
Thank you, Kathy.
The website is awesome.
Thank you. Kathy and Larry.
All in favor?
Aye. Favorit.
Allison.
Larry.
Okay, so Kathy O'Neill. So what's the address for
It is the same name. It's under the same name. The West Wocany EDC. We keep it simple. That's what we are, that's what it is.
So our Facebook page has the same name?
Yes, West Wocany EDC.
Welcome. Glad you're here. Glad you're here. Sorry, we're getting worried and then I saw your text.
Okay.
Tough afternoon.
It has.
Well, not tough, just busy, I guess.
Yeah, thank you. That's just me, didn't it?
I thought it was Elizabeth.
Larry, Larry Easter. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get on this.
We got it.
We did.
We got it. Okay, so that's all our old business. We're going to run to the new business real quick. Of course, I place some small
I'm not kidding.
We still have to handle gender stuff. Yeah, but we're going to do this here. I'll turn it on you. Twenty minutes. That's what I thought. Okay, so I'm sure it'll be bad.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm assuming going to new business then, let's forget our consent agenda real quick. Get that out of the way.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last June 20th meeting.
Second motion.
Wait a minute. Sam Stowe.
I don't know which one.
Okay, second paragraph on the second page says Kathy Osborne. In that second paragraph down.
Um, sorry, just needed to
Let's change that name real quick. Kathy O'Neil or Elizabeth Osborne, which one?
She did the coloring. Oh, she did that throughout.
Yep.
She must think you're new. You got it right though.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jane. I'll be Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll get back with you.
I'll be concerned.
New business, the nine A shows the same thing.
Yes. They joined us together.
Yeah. Y'all united here. Okay.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Changed all of there. She got my whole name right. Mine's larger than mine. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to try and correct that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to change eight B paragraph, the second sentence from Kathy Osborne to Kathy O'Neil. And under nine A, the same thing. Change it from Kathy Osborne to Kathy O'Neil.
And B there's one, there's a
Is there another one on B?
Yeah, should be Pam Reed and Kathy O'Neil. Diana Reeves. On nine D.
Nine.
Kathy's going to be signing, not me.
Oh. And on B, change Elizabeth Osborne to Kathy O'Neil.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Allison Bell.
Pam Reed.
Elizabeth Osborne.
Kathy O'Neil.
Larry Perry.
That's the same.
It's okay. We got you. All right.
Yeah, she is.
She's enjoying us. And we're happy.
So we're going to go into things considered agenda. I just want to point out one thing. On the bills paid and dues to fee paid. Profit loss, actually, on profit and loss. If you hold note line eleven fifty, one fifteen, the very first line of profit and loss. It shows that we received fourteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty eight cents of that repayment. The next payment will be due in September and that will cover the rest.
The loan will be paid back?
As far as this year's.
Oh, okay.
It's just that what they do, you may see the city's thing that looks like it's paid. But what they do is they move it from the sinking fund to the city account and they keep it there for a couple of months and then they give it to us. That's the reason, if you see the city's profit loss, you may see a different number there. Because I checked into that today. Because I was wondering why the check that they paid with it had.
Okay. Where are the bills that we need to pay?
And what the we have any bills that we need to pay just right in the month? The tax expenses by vendor. That's what we paid over the last month.
We still haven't closed on the property?
No, we haven't. Everything is supposed to be there, so we're at a loss for what we have closed yet.
I don't see the check number twenty nine A seven.
Didn't you say there was one voided before?
Oh, yeah.
Was that the one that was voided previously?
There was one that was voided. I have to look at it. Twenty nine, oh, yes, our bank account. Yes, that is the one that is voided.
Okay.
Now, we have actually a back statement with all of you. Except today.
Thank you.
So we have no bills to pay?
We will have the bill for the painting final payment on that day.
And our secretary.
And our secretary. And we will have an electric bill coming in for this one. So those will be the only three that I know of that we have at current time. You know, water and electric, when we get someone out, if you look at it, that's going to be mine. The next.
Well, I make a motion to approve the profit and loss statements.
A second. All in favor?
Allison Bell. Pam Reed.
Elizabeth Osborne.
Kathy O'Neil.
Larry Perry.
Okay. All right. So did we do the
I'll make a motion to approve the bills paid and to be paid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Second.
Larry Perry.
Kathy O'Neil.
Elizabeth Osborne.
Pam Reed.
Allison Zerbe.
Yeah, we approved the minutes after we corrected it.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay, so I think we've got them all down in our in our back statements. The last bit.
Make a motion, we accept our bank statement as it's stated.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Larry Perry.
Kathy O'Neil.
Elizabeth Osborne.
Pam Reed.
Allison Zerbe.
All right, so we're through with the consent agenda.
Yes.
Looking for our officer. Paul Robinson is going to name your officer. And he's going to talk about new business on your list.
Oh. Over cameras?
He's coming. He's coming.
I bet.
All right.
This is John Alderson and Paul Robinson?
Thompson.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll get you two next up again. So effectively, he's someone who will explain to us about the
That we're asking, or that we're wanting for us. We have, when I was at East Wocany, we had one as well. We have two now. But one on ours, so that what it brings in, it's last play readers. Anybody that's wanted, anybody that's missing through our city, it alerts us immediately on it. Not only that, but it also gives us a chance to see how many vehicles are traveling through our city at any given time. And how many's coming through a month, day, whatever. Where's our heaviest traffic when, and all that. So we can do reports and things like that on it as well. But the main focus is really on catching the criminal in Cuban, the criminals out. Knowing what's coming in our city and what's coming out of our city.
Because if somebody breaks into something down here, and we have a timeframe of it. The only way out of this town is through one of them cameras. And if somebody says, I was a blue car, they didn't get no other information. We look around the timeframe and we got the license plate, got all the information of it and everything already read.
I mean, if you give us just, just the minor details, let's say you saw a truck and it had window decals. I can go in and I can look, or we can go in and we can look for a truck. We don't have to be
We don't have to be any specific truck or anything, just a truck with window decals. We can break it down to decals, um, racks on the trucks. I mean, that's how detailed that this company has their camera system for their, and their reporting.
Where would the cameras be?
I'm sorry?
Where would the cameras be?
They'd be in and out of our city on both sides. And then if we did that, there won't be. Yeah, at least longer at a cover area.
Will they be clearly seen where people can see them?
They'll be, they'll be seen. If you go into the Tumal Bridge right now, you'll see one off to the right going into East Walkin'. And that's what it'll look like.
Go to the other end at Vintage Shores, the new place. Vintage Shores Homeowners Association bought the other one and mounted it right there, so.
So the install is, um, because we're gonna provide and set them up, set up the pole ourselves is thirty one hundred apiece. Um, then after that, the only thing that drops off is a hundred, cause the hundred is their installation fee. Um, the rest is, the three thousand a year is for their maintenance, their upkeep. The camera system, um, which is Flock camera system.
Is that per camera?
Per camera, yes ma'am.
It's three thousand dollars a year? And they own the cameras or we're renting them?
It's actually our cameras. They just maintain them. So they keep up all the database. If anything happens to them, um, they pay for, out of that is also the, uh, because they're on cellular. So whichever one is the strongest is what SIM card they put in it. Um, that's in there as well. So it's basically just the upkeep of software, um, anything that they're putting into it. So and just to make it more functional for us.
Could they be run off of the fiber net? Cause that would be more steady.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to worry about it going out at all.
And the thing is their solar power does well, so they don't need any power to them at all. Yeah, but.
The cell service.
The cell service that they use and like the modems that we've got in strike cars when we ordered all the new cameras. Those, I mean, it's hard for them to go out. We've got LP readers in every car.
Yeah.
And the camera system. And so, but they put a modem inside the car that runs that.
And they go out and they do a signal strength test where it's reinstalled and they'll figure out which carrier is better for that spot.
Do you have any funds or anything for this at all yet?
Uh, no ma'am.
And you have none of the cameras?
We've been discussing it with several businesses as well.
I'm sorry?
We've been discussing it with several other businesses.
So to start, it would at least be the sixty two hundred?
Correct.
For two cameras?
For two cameras, yes ma'am.
Do we have that? We have that somewhere.
Aye, next one.
And what we're hoping is, like all the other towns, I mean, East Walkin' uses theirs. Point don't have one, but cameras. But we're gonna turn this into the impound yard. All the vehicles that the regular service gets and charges a fee and stuff, we will get. And that should maintain the cost of the cameras with the vehicles.
Sure.
Right.
There's a lot of expansion with Flock. I mean, they, they have several different, um, things that's coming out in the future. Um, three sixty degree cameras, um, that we can place. They all combine with each other. So like we have these two sitting down here and say we have a business that wants to, uh, or a high, let's just say a high, um, crime area, we can place one of these in. It's kinda like downtown Dallas when you go and you see ones that they have their little logo on them.
Right.
So Flock's coming out with those as well.
So you said that they can, um, you know, do the reports as far as the traffic coming in and out. Would that be something that if we were to help with the money that they would allow us to get a report on the traffic wise?
I hate to recall those reports at any time.
Cause that would be good information.
There's cameras that lights here and there and like could used to ticket you for doing something wrong. So there won't be a problem with that if we put these cameras up and somebody's gonna come back and say, you can't do that?
No, uh, because it's. Yeah, and state takes us, you can't, right? State takes off of it.
But it's to help you locate, bind and to know.
This is more for.
Are they available three sixty five, twenty four seven for when there is?
Oh, they're running all the time.
Yeah. Like right now.
So the reason that we're considering this is.
Somebody comes through, there's one, there's some car or.
And it's gotta be an alert. It's not like it's a light fee either.
Okay.
So these, it's gotta trigger it.
Okay.
So we can even take like if somebody's missing, they were like a silver alert. And they give us the license plate.
Right.
We can put these into the camera and if that car ever comes by, they're alerted.
I guess I should rephrase it. It doesn't have to be triggered. The vehicle triggers it.
Right.
But it's not a light fee, so we can't sit there and just watch every car coming through.
Right, okay.
We, we can see every car coming through, you know, but we just gotta go, look, this is, I wanna see this. And it's gonna give you every car that just passed by.
Okay, like a time span.
Correct.
We're going and saying around this time something happened and they can take.
Correct, yes.
So the reason the EDC is even considering this is, uh, we've been talking about, uh, problems with businesses having, you know, some security issues and problems, one of that. And we feel like, uh, this is maybe a, a good way of trying to eliminate some of those problems is to actually have a look at what's going on in our city here.
What's coming and going.
What's coming and going. Um, and so that fits under our, uh, umbrella of what an EDC can do to help with, with, with this.
So we're looked at here in this town because there's only three ways in this town.
Right.
I mean, is it Sunnyvale or Winnebago?
Oh, forty. Winnebago Farms has like sixty cameras in just that one neighborhood.
All, every street's covered. You ain't going nowhere.
Yeah, Winnebago Farms will help.
Yeah.
Now, you, you watch forty though, they're in chase every night. Because of Winnebago Farms.
So this can actually go under, uh, line items.
And plus it's gonna get, uh, be able to give us a more, uh, realistic idea of the traffic coming in and out, which is.
So if people went into the park, say, and it would trigger somebody, if somebody had a West Point out for them, do you know they were there in the park?
Well, we would know when they enter the city.
Right, cause the cameras are only gonna read what's coming in and out at that location.
When you were talking about two, one of each, and the city.
Right. You could hear the businesses.
This would be considered a project of the EDC.
It's a, we'd order those projects.
Yeah.
Cause we could place one of those on the, at the park.
At the park, right.
Well, it does help if it comes through and then a lot of businesses have.
Those hours.
Then we can. And then once it comes through in the largest.
Well, it's very close to you.
Still in the city somewhere.
Right. Okay, so you're asking for us to pay for this year, but you're going to have to pay three thousand every year. Piece.
Right, so we're, okay, so we're really, if you want pay every year, it's great. Well, it's just like a base and a starting point for us. So that'll give us a year.
Right, to, cause they're gonna use the impound fees and use the options of. Textile or next place is. The sixty two. Right.
The purchase.
Well, we're gonna pay the installation. And the first years. And we're gonna pay the first year. The three thousand.
Every month?
No.
A year.
One year.
Three thousand a year.
Yes.
Well, sixty two, sixty two hundred for this year.
Two cam.
Two cameras. Two cameras, one coming and going, one being ten.
I missed some. Well, I understand, but I missed, I thought it was every month they had.
No, no, it's just one time.
I would look somewhere totally different if that was the case. That'd be a little too much.
Sixteen thousand and five. Cause drones have.
Yeah.
LP readers on them. Has a, has a big bullhorn on it.
That's why I asked.
Spotlight like the helicopter.
Did you say I don't have anything to go to?
Well, yeah.
Three thousand.
No, but we have.
We have nothing.
So they need the whole sixty two hundred.
Have y'all? You're buying the cameras, correct?
In this price.
Correct.
And this price is just for the yearly thing. It's not paid for the cameras or it is?
It's the camera, it's the camera, it's insulation, the setup, everything.
Everything.
Yeah, so they'd be good for a year.
But you're buying it, so you own them. So going forward, next year, what will, the fee's gonna be another three thousand?
It's still gonna, it's still gonna be three thousand.
They're doing the upkeep, uh, the database and all the information.
So the cost of signed upkeep for these years, it costs to buy it.
Pretty much. I mean, installation's a hundred, that's all. And the reason for that is we're providing the pole.
Right.
Cause the poles apparently got expensive this year.
You pay a hundred dollars for the cameras.
And for them to set it up.
And the maintenance, but they're actually giving you the cameras.
There you go.
Yeah, cause they're maintaining the cloud base. They're maintaining all the, everything.
Okay.
On their servers.
And you're anticipating being able to pay those fees every year going forward. You might need some help, which we're.
Right, and we'll, we'll work on that when it comes closer.
That's right. So right now, they need sixty two hundred dollars for the package.
Yes.
And they have no other resources.
And I'll tell you the, and I'm, I'm not gonna say that this is gonna happen here, but, but our first month, cause I was the lieutenant over there. First month we had it in service, we recovered five stolen vehicles coming across the bridge.
I think the next one I do.
See, I'd like to see one at Rabbit Cove, too.
That's where.
So are we talking of doing three then instead of two?
What's on?
I said that's what we planned also in the future is one at May Lane and Rabbit Cove where they both, they do.
Yeah.
Everybody coming.
Because if we.
In from North Shore.
North Shore.
And everybody coming.
Because it's a small, it's a more, it's a more narrow road right there, so if we placed it just right, we could get them coming in and going from there.
Right, cause there's that opening.
It'd be nice.
Yeah, cause you get such an angle.
Yeah.
And we're gonna cover all points of entry.
And I think, uh.
Can you afford that?
We have it.
So there's twenty five thousand.
And I think with the, uh, some of the businesses.
We need to do something desperate. Like a difference, but it's kinda like the, the. The back of the map. If we don't make it bold and big and if we don't make the statement, it's not gonna do any, any good.
Okay.
We're gonna do it.
That's the major problem area. I live down that road too, so.
Yeah. Okay, so then, uh, are we through with discussion?
Well.
I'm done.
I'm done.
Chair, we're ready to change the motion?
I make a motion. We do the three cameras with the first year, um, the installment and the first year for the service of ninety three hundred.
Second. All in favor?
Allison Bell.
Larry.
Kathy O'Neal.
Elizabeth Osborne.
Henry.
Allison Zerbe.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay, so, um. I will, um, be up here tomorrow at seven o'clock. We will catch you at seven.
Get it all together and get.
Okay, I think that's very good.
Thank you.
We'll hit the businesses for the other.
Yeah.
All the other stuff you need.
The, the three sixties would be great.
Uh, but I, I think this is something that will really help our businesses in town. Uh, I think it'll help our citizens and.
A lot of businesses will feel more secure.
Right.
Knowing.
Right.
No, and we know.
They got something.
We know crimes coming, criminals coming through.
And MLAT, y'all, is the development board, know how much traffic's coming through here or what.
And so we've watched that too.
I guarantee you with that, with that opening up, there's a lot of people bypassing one lane now.
There is, yes.
Cause we've noticed the increase in traffic.
Oh, yeah.
We got Atmos gas in there, I bet you we would have faster places.
We're gonna work on that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know an email was sent to them, so.
We need to help you to have the tools to do your job the best you can and that's what we're trying to do.
We appreciate it.
That's awesome. I'm excited about this.
I see.
Me too.
Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Two seconds. I love sure.
Larry.
Larry.
Yeah. All right, guys, so I feel very good about that.
I do too.
That will help our businesses and that will help.
And that helps.
Surprise here in town.
People coming in too to know that we've already got it covered. The residents, yeah. No, it might make some residents feel a little safer.
Yeah, I agree. I agree for that.
Awesome.
What's the thing?
And, uh, that will, our line items, that is considered A four, A four B project.
Yeah.
And so we will be taking it out of that line item and we haven't taken anything out of that all year.
People, people that, uh, bring in stuff to pass around. We can get in trouble with them cameras.
With what do you mean?
What do you mean, Larry?
No, they have to, okay, when these cameras are set up, if a stolen vehicle goes through.
Right.
They have to tell it to look for it. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not just gonna individualize everything. It will tell us a count, but it's not directing at anything until they tell it what to look for in a certain time span.
So if they have a report of so many stolen cars, I mean, put in that, those license plates of all those stolen cars.
Yeah.
It will alert them when the, those stolen cars come through.
Right. It's not just gonna, I mean, it's recording, but it's not gonna pick out individual things unless they tell it to.
Right.
The other option for that is if a business says, say they have a burglary at such and such time and there was, they can look at that time span and see.
That shoe or car.
Right, because if they come in this way and it didn't go out the other way, it's in here somewhere.
Somewhere.
Right.
Very good.
Yeah.
I think that's really good for our community and for our businesses.
Yeah.
And we have the resources.
And we have the resources to do it.
There's absolutely no reason not to.
Right. It's only making our city safer.
Yes.
And more attractive.
More attractive. Okay, so next on the agenda. Uh, oh, annual tax returns. Okay, so this has been a question that's come up several, several times about EDCs and doing tax returns. And we've never done a tax return. And so I did some investigation and the EDC does not have to do a tax return as a nonprofit as long as we can show that our community is under, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A disadvantaged community and our community is considered bad on all of those. Cause we don't have enough businesses, we don't have enough population and our, a lot of our people are in poverty. So we do not have to do a tax return. That is not to say that if our community is not built up and, and we lose that status, we may have to do a tax return. But right now, we don't.
Okay.
And we hope to get there someday. And we hope to get there someday, but right now we do not. So I just wanted to clear the air on that and I, I've talked to, and I've looked it up all over the place, but I've talked to some other EDCs and same boat. And they say that, no, we don't have to worry about that. So I wanted that cleared up so everybody would know that.
Okay.
Okay. There is an article in your packet about it also that I have provided you with. These pages.
Yeah.
So you can read it there.
Okay. Um, so we may actually take it on in a minute. Um, okay. We need to meet with that most energy for natural gas to West Walkin'. Okay, we do need to meet with them. The last time I talked to anyone was at the Chamber Building. It was a representative from Atmos and they said that, um, they have plans eventually to go to Quinlan, but. Not right here. So we need to talk that out. Any suggestions on that?
What do you mean as far as suggestions?
Natural gas over here.
I'll call. I'll just discuss with them, ask them what we need and why haven't been, what we gotta get to get, come out here. I'm gonna, I guess that'd be the best way to start. I'll find out. If it's not, if we're not up to requirements, then what do, what do we need to do to get there? Some, like some of the shoreline property. Cause if we could get them on our side, they, they might have some help with that.
Yeah, that, that's one of the issues right there is, um, the SRA is around Peninsula. We've got the SRA all the way around us. That's one of the issues. The other thing is the Texas Environmental Quality people.
CEQ.
CEQ. They have some concerns about moving natural gas down to this peninsula.
Well, I have some connects there. I recall from when I was an AB operator. Well, I have some connects there, I recall, from when I was an AV operator for another area. I can call and ask them.
Well, it would be something that the gas company would be able to work through because they would have to, you know.
Yeah.
Talking to all three entities and seeing, getting them all started.
Yeah.
And see if it's possible.
And that's something we'd like to see happen.
Yeah, possible and feasible.
Okay. So at this point.
I know they wanted to do that. They wanted to do that a long time ago. Bill Slaughter.
Sure.
Was very big.
Yeah.
On that. And we had several, several meetings in the nineties.
Yeah.
Ninety-five and ninety-six and stuff.
This is thirty-three years later.
We're starting to get gassier.
Right.
It's time that they evolve. We have more population.
I'm gonna talk with Bill out there and see if I can get, cause he had all the information on everything.
Excellent, sir.
Yeah. So that could be.
If you'll talk to, to Bill on that and you'll call them, I, I'm gonna talk to the person I met at the Chamber again.
Very good.
Uh, about it and see if we can't get some member there.
I can do that tomorrow.
And if they see, if, if, if they see that we are wanting to bring it here.
Right.
Then they have to come through Quinlan to get it here, and they push the button to get them to bring it to Quinlan, too, because they have the population there, the population here would be worthwhile for their business to grow that way.
Yeah.
I could probably talk to the technical over there over there about that. Okay.
For John and Lynn.
For John.
Yeah. I, I need co-conspiracy to get it brought through, you know, through most cities.
Yeah.
Part where it's already available.
Right. Yeah, okay. So that will be our plan. We'll get those first and then we'll be discussing it.
Might even incorporate catermills.
Hmm, right.
You know?
Yeah.
Let's move on. I, I do need us to turn to executive session on the next part. Let me talk about some of your.
I think it's time to stop.
I'm not supposed to stop.